I just hit record Tuesday.
Okay, everybody ready? I'll call the meeting to order. Is that all I need to do?
Yep.
All right, um, everybody is here except Cory. I'm gonna be the, what's my official term?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor today. Um, we'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. There was one change on the agenda. Item fourteen, we eliminated. There's no other changes. I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Consent agenda. Do we have any questions or any, uh, conversation on that?
Good question. Did you ever get the, uh, Brenda, did you ever get the submissions for the?
Yeah, we've had a table here until we get answers. The county typically will clean those up.
Yeah.
There are times they send to us, but we're trying to refine that process.
No other questions.
So, that's regarding the tax exempt claims.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. I'm not supposed to say aye, right? That's weird. Do I?
You're a councilman.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure.
You're just facilitating.
Got it. All right, number five, approval of the meeting minutes from September twentieth.
I had no issue with them. Did anyone else see anything?
Nope, I can make a motion.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Aye. Um, item six, public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to speak publicly about anything? Can you take the microphone and tell us your name and where you're, where you live?
I am Lowell Johnson. I just recently moved out to, uh, Country Acres out here. And I'm a former mayor and councilman back in a small town in Iowa. But, uh, I've been trying to get ahold of Keith and I was hoping Keith would be here tonight, but I guess he's not. So, I just had a question on my building permit. Just a simple question, but I can't get him to respond to me. So, I was hoping he'd be here tonight, so I.
Can you tell us what your question is?
Well, I'm putting up a garage behind my house and I hauled in four feet of clay, as requested by your, um, building, uh, ordinances. I guess it's two and a half feet above the flood stage or the basin level. And so, I've done that and then I finally got Interstate Engineering to come out there a month and a half later after Jacob quit. And they finally got a new guy there. And, uh, it's getting later and later. It doesn't look like I'm gonna get the building up, but I'd like to get the concrete poured. So, my question is, do I need, can I use, I hired a contractor here in North Dakota because the contractor that's gonna put the building up is from Iowa. He's a friend of mine back in Iowa. He doesn't have a North Dakota license, so he's applying for that now. So, can I use the contractor's license from the concrete person to at least get the con- concrete poured?
I would have to follow up with Keith on that, but.
What would be the issue with that if he's pouring concrete by a North Dakota licensed contractor?
It probably wouldn't be an issue. It shouldn't be an issue.
But I have, I had to have the contractor's license on the application for the building permit.
You'd maybe have some more paperwork. Um, yeah, we do have a lag with our permits. But we will make Keith, you know, make it known that you are here. And, um, Keith is usually here during business hours.
Yeah, I didn't know if he was required to come to the.
Not usually unless there's a specific item for him.
Right, yeah.
Brent is his supervisor and he can carry your message.
I'll follow up with him in the morning.
Okay.
And ask him, or one of the other billion inspectors. We have three inspectors, so I'll ask one of the guys to follow up with you.
Oh, you have more than just Keith?
Yep. Keith does more commercial, but yours isn't a commercial application, so we have three billion inspectors.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, I guess if somebody told me that, I could have maybe tried tracking somebody else down, but. Yeah, so I'll follow up with one of the billion inspectors tomorrow and ask them to get in touch with you.
Do you have a phone number? Did you leave a phone number?
I did leave a phone number with the girls here, yep.
Yep, they'll have your contact information on application. So, I wrote down your name and, uh, Saint Country Acres there, so they should be able to narrow that down.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Lowell.
Okay, anybody else have public comments? Move on to item seven, sheriff's update. Looks like we do not have a sheriff or a deputy here, so we'll skip that. And number eight, Ready Tech Fiber.
Here, I thought.
Jacob.
I'll check to see if he texts me. Yeah, I do not see him here, so if he does show, I'll let you know.
Okay. Item nine, construction engineering services selection, Brenton.
Okay, this item here is for two water projects, Water Improvement District number twenty twenty dash seven connection to Casterole. And then also twenty twenty dash six, horse proper water replacement. Uh, we did a selective process for the engineering. We had one application that was from Interstate Engineering. Uh, we needed to, we needed to go through a competitive selection process for the engineering work in order to be able to submit that to the state for any reimbursements and costs in order to be eligible. So, like I said, we had one app, or one submittal for each of them. It was Interstate Engineering. I can give you the dollar amounts here in just a second.
No competition, well.
Does it need to be competition to make it legal?
We have to go through a process and have it posted for, I believe, two weeks. Three?
There's no dollar amounts in there?
No, you, I thought you had dollar amount in there.
Just statement of qualifications.
Yeah, statement of qualifications. Why is that? $100, so anyways, uh, has to be posted for three weeks. And it's opportunity for any engineers to compete for it. So, this, we need to have council approval of this in order to be able to see reimbursement for the engineering work done for these projects and the future engineering work done as projects go on.
Okay.
They are separate. Separate projects, so I'll make sure you have two separate options. That's why they're separate.
Okay, so this is the connection to Casterole. That's something we've been working on though? Like what's, what, explain why are we, why do we have it here?
It's a requirement by the, by the State Water Commission for, 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 to participate in their cost share. You have to go through a consultant selection process.
Okay. So, had we been.
This is for the construction services.
It's kind of, is it a technicality or, like, I mean, we've already been working on this?
Yeah, we, Timmy will elaborate.
Yes, it's, it's a requirement of the process.
Okay. And so, the, the water replacement on this, I guess I could wait to talk about that one, but that's the same situation.
The same situation, yeah.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the, um, improvement district twenty twenty dash seven?
Not for me. I say, let's do it.
No, there's no reason that we can't make a motion first for District twenty twenty dash seven to move forward with engineering as stipulated.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Yeah, I can second that.
Naomi does the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Um, Water Improvement District twenty twenty dash six. Can we, um, and I'm sure we'll get an update on this, but my street is a complete disaster. I had to park on the side of different street.
In due time.
Um.
In due time.
Okay, we'll talk about that later. Do we have any discussion on the engineering services for this twenty twenty dash six?
I have, just no further discussion on it. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right, item ten, sanitary sewer improvement district twenty twenty one dash six, Horseshoe Bend lift station. Jim, do you want to make up this one?
I do. So, as you recall, we discussed a little bit at the last meeting, but bids for the improvement district were opened on September sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Received bids from three general contractors and one electrical contractor. Due to the nature of this work, there was a general contract lift, there was an electrical contract lift, and then there was a general, including electrical, contract that was solicited for. A little bidder was CC Steel Fargo with a total base bid for the general and electrical of seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, forty-two, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, forty-two dollars. They did not submit an electrical bid and their bid for just the, uh, lift station load was six hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Uh, the next two bids we had were from Saline Brothers and Dakota Underground Company. And, uh, they were nine hundred and thirty-three and nine hundred and forty-four thousand and change, so significantly a little bit more. So, um, at the time of the meeting last, or two weeks ago, we had talked with CC Steel and he was requesting that we have time to review his numbers and to review what he had for information if he wanted to accept the project or if he wanted to just forfeit his bond and go on to the next, next lowest bidder. So, um, I have talked with him. There was a little uncertainty with the soils that they were questioning. He said he was good with his number. Was, was fine with it. He just mentioned, um, there's a potential for a elusive sand vein to be running up and down this part of the world. We had soil borings south of there and South Hill Farms addition. Just directly south of this, there wasn't any sand vein, but it tends to meander just a little bit. So, um, he had talked about right now, he bid it for rock, but he said if I run into that sand vein or anything like that, he said he'd like to be able to come to city council and just have a discussion about the potential for some, for some additional, additional rock to go through there. So, um, that was his only, he just wanted, uh, an idea from the council that you'd be willing to discuss it with him, you know? He said he understood that the quantity right now is unknown and that it also, like I talked earlier, is, you know, maybe the second, third bidders factored that in. But, um, like I said, CC Steel was pretty confident in their bid if you're gonna get it done with that. So, um, as long as you guys are willing to, to, uh, talk with him if their site conditions do change from what he anticipated. He did pull a well drillers log and he did reach out to Broad InterTech, but they were, uh, quite a bit behind of the bid opening for doing any type of soil exploration. So, this is a really relatively deep lift station, thirty plus feet deep. It serves as much area as it can in that area of Deer Creek Parkway and County Road seventeen. Serves as much as Horseshoe Bend, Deer Creek Estates, Deer Creek Estates, second addition, and then the commercial along sixty-fourth Avenue. So, um, we did have in the contracts to start this project this year. That's potentially going to be in jeopardy just due to material supply shortage and whatnot. But, uh, CC Steel would like to at least get the material coming, get it all stockpiled, and then potentially submit a, uh, a request for payment for material on hand, stored materials.
So, is he gonna wait to start until you have the material in yet?
He's gonna wait till the material's here because some of it has a long lead time and then it'll evaluate the weather, see what it looks like. And, uh, I wouldn't be surprised if they don't try to get the station in itself. But it was, uh, depending upon when everything could, could get delivered. So, we'll, if the council doesn't wanna go forward with award tonight, we'll get those contracts sent out. We'll get the shopper examined and precast that, precast is like right now as far as turnaround times on shop rooms, but it can be a couple of weeks and contracts could be done. Um, we would get that process going and that was, the main concern was the potential for pipe prices to go up substantially next year. You want to get that all locked in, all locked in this year, so.
Supposedly Wells Concrete was sixteen months out when somebody had talked to them.
Well, thank God this isn't tip up then. Holy God.
Yeah.
So, was there something that he, that was seen that he requested, that, the whole sandbar thing that you were talking about, I guess?
No, he didn't see any evidence of it, but whenever there's a discrepancy of a hundred thousand dollars plus in a bid, you kind of look back and go, what did I miss? And that's what he wanted, what the, what, uh, CC Steel wanted. He would just look back and see if there was something that they had.
So, he says he's sure, he's pretty confident in his bid, but then he's.
If there's a potential that he gets some, some, uh, differing site conditions, he'd wanna be able to talk to the city council about potential for some additional compensation for that.
Even if we had a situation pop up where it's unforeseen or unexpected dynamic happen, we'd probably have a conversation with the contractor. It's just, you know.
Can you just explain to me, Jim, like, I don't understand, like, what happens if they have sand?
So, what happens is the pipe is embedded on a, so you put the pipe in the ground. Underneath that, you have to have bedding. Typically, you use sand to fill underneath the haunches, the round parts of the pipe, so that it stays on grade and stays on, online. And what happens is if there's unsuitable material down there, you have to use rock because you can bridge the water and you can get it, get it up to maintain that grade. The rock is more expensive than sand. And placing it is a little bit more of a challenge than, than sand. Sand tends to conform to the shape of it, whereas with a rock, you have to kind of tamp it more and get it in there and you get it elevated out of the water so that it stays put and doesn't float. We've actually had some, some pipe float around water tower where there's been so much groundwater that they place the pipe in, get it on line and grade, and the water equipment will actually start floating before they can get the material on top of it to keep it in place. So, that rock is a more firm bedding for the, for that pipe.
And it all depends on the type of rock that is needed, if there is availability of a little bit more. So, the size of the rock, if it's a, you know, a simple rock, look at two inches minus, or if you're going to six inch, you know, there's a bunch of different things. So, my first question was, A, was there a geotechnical report provided?
There was not on this one.
There was not a geotech provided. So, it's up to each contractor to do their own due diligence on this particular item. I will tell you that those that have made, dug around this over this area are a little more familiar with the fact that there may or may not be a sand vein. I know there's a few running through my development just hearsay here and there. The fact that he did pull a well drillers log tells me that he has done his own due diligence, um, to do his best absent of a geotechnical report and absent of, uh, doing his own bore logs at his own expense to do that. So, um, at this point in time, I don't have an issue awarding. I will tell you that if site conditions change, if they do run into an unforeseen, something that is not on a well drillers log, yes, I would entertain a discussion on that. And I, I believe that that is only fair given the circumstance and the depth that they're going to. This is going to be a very key location. This is going to be something, um, this lift station is gonna be used for commercial properties, residential properties. I hesitate if we have a couple that actually did figure for a sand vein in their bid and one that did not. You know, I, I, I think people can interpret that one way or another. However, the fact that a log was pulled and, uh, not anticipated, I know I've seen a lot of excavation over in that area. I drive by it every day. I've not seen a sand vein there. It doesn't mean that they won't run into one. Who knows how far down? But, you know, a trucker to a rock, I don't think is anything we're gonna be too concerned about. If it gets to be a large quantity, obviously, we should talk about it, so.
So, on the contrary, with, with South Hill Farms, we did have a geotechnical report. We did state where we wanted a lift station. Contractor tried to put the lift station there, lost the hole. We ended up doing some value engineering to move it to the, to the west and we got some cost savings because of that. So, we talked about the last meeting was our deductive change order at that time. So, kind of goes both ways. You can go both ways, but that was significantly further east than where we're looking at right now. We're gonna be closer to County Road seventeen.
Okay.
Is there anyone that has an opinion in mind on that?
Nope.
No, I trust, I trust that.
I, I feel pretty good about it honestly. Um, again, I, I don't wanna hear hide nor hair of it if it's a trucker to a rock. If it's ten trucks, we'll talk, but a trucker to, I think we can work together on, on, so. I'll go ahead and make a motion to, uh, consider the award of the bid for the sanitary sewer improvement district twenty twenty one dash six lift station. S A dash thirteen, Horseshoe Bend.
CC Steel.
Two CC Steel, thank you.
Second.
Sarah made a motion. Jeff second. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number eleven, sprinkler ordinance.
Suzuka's isn't here. I'll do this. Uh, we have gone back and forth at times. Do we do this as a consent item or standalone? I felt since when I always just do it as a standalone item unless council says otherwise. Second reading for this ordinance. Uh, nothing has changed. From what was presented to you at last council meeting, uh, summarize what this ordinance really does. It basically says to where you're gonna have a meter, put on fire sprinkler systems such as like the school. Just, uh, example, their school is the example where we have this pop up. Casterole water would honor our ordinances if we have them. And this, this issue popped up with, like I said, the construction of the high school, so, uh, looking for a second reading on this. We had no objections to this during the first reading, during the public hearing.
Any questions?
Nope, still have no objection.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to, uh, approve the sprinkler ordinance. Second reading?
Yeah. Go ahead, Jeff.
Make a motion to approve the sprinkler ordinance. Second reading?
Jeff makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Naomi seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item twelve, City Hall remodel, Brenton.
Uh, this one here is for the furniture component of, uh, the remodel of City Hall. So, we have a bid from Christiansen's. Christiansen's did the cubicles, desks, furniture that we have in City Hall right now over in the office area. Uh, what this is, I believe there's a map that identifies areas that we'd have furniture added. Uh, 'cause this remodel does give us a little bit more office space, more desk space. It comes for, uh, some new desks and different things like that, chairs. The price tag from, or the quote from Christiansen's is for twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. Uh, what I'd ask council, my recommendation to use, uh, to approve up to thirty thousand. Obviously, we go with this bid since they are, it'd be the same materials basically that we already have, as much as possible. The thirty thousand is just in case we do have, we need to go get a chair or table, that, uh, this furniture is not cheap. But, uh, that would be my recommendation from, to council. And also provide.
So, you're, you're not replacing, you're not replacing anything that we already have? You're just adding?
Basically adding.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, this also has demo to, for them to take down the current furniture, cubicles, things like that, and then to put it back up. The stuff that we do have. Obviously, some of the cubicle walls are going to be reused right now. It may be used in the future. We'd store them, uh, because we'd be doing full walls in some locations of this remodel. Uh, but the desks, we're trying to use as much as what we have currently and then just get.
What you need.
Yes. So, as you can see, I don't know if you can see the map on there. Uh, for example, one of the offices does not show getting a new desk because we just use what we have.
Are you seeing the map?
No.
I don't see the map.
Okay. Do we have the map up there, Sally?
This was company.
And I could pass this down if you wanna see if they forgot.
This was the company we went with before? This was the company we went with before?
Yes.
Yeah, so the furniture will match, which is nice.
Yeah. And that's why we see that come down, because it would be the same.
When you guys got this new furniture, you had gotten a couple bids or?
Yes, we bid it out. We had three different bids. I believe it was three different bids last time, so.
Yeah, you can see some of these are like piecemeal together, so having the matching furniture is key.
You don't have the map?
Yeah.
Okay.
They, they've got it.
Yeah, they got it there now. It also includes like a conference table and.
During that time, all this stuff is going into storage then or?
We will likely need to either store it in their shop or, uh, one idea that's been thrown around with staff is do we get like a mobile storage trailer or something? Where we can store all of our items just outside City Hall, so we don't have to move it all the way around. We can just put it right in front of us, here, in the building here.
Any questions? Discussion?
For that money, I better have a place to sit when I come in.
I'll get you a chair.
And I wanna sit at that conference table.
Yeah.
The racetrack conference table.
The racetrack conference table.
That is, does that have integral power modules?
The power onto the table? Yeah, we were just talking about that. We're gonna talk to them about that.
I think we should.
Yeah.
It does include two power modules and ten chairs, so that's what it does have in there. Yep.
The rest of it, I don't have an issue with.
Yep.
We're, we're gonna spend that on a conference table, integral power modules. I want us to get that table permanently.
They'll put your plaque out there for you. So, yes, conference tables are not cheap.
No, I know. And I, the only thing really that I question here, the rest of it, looks like a very nice use of space. The chairs are reasonable. It's, it's, obviously, this stuff isn't cheap. I get it. But at the same time, we want something that's going to last because I don't wanna do this every five years. So, sometimes you get what you pay for. That makes sense.
Yeah.
But that's the only question I have. Do we need something white to that extent or is there something else maybe?
We can ask the question, see if there's any class savings, 'cause the table doesn't need to match the other furniture either, so maybe there's a, you know, a finish that's.
I think all we do is ask the question, but I will tell you that with the amount of times that I come here with this, it's not a bad thing to have power.
I think the power is key, but I think there might be some ways we could save money on the table depending on like what finishes they gave us and.
Perfect. I'll leave that in your capable hands. The rest of it, I have no concerns with.
I would agree.
All right, if, if you guys don't have any more discussion, I'll look for a motion to, is that what I was, just a motion or do I?
You look for a motion and what I'm asking for is have, I like to go a little higher than what the bid is, that when something comes up, we're not gonna come back to you. I mean, there is some discretion in staff we do have, but I like to put a threshold on there, so.
What dollar are you looking for?
I'm asking for thirty. That gives us roughly about fifteen percent wiggle room, so.
Well, I can make a motion to, uh, how do you want me to say?
Approve thirty thousand.
Approve up to thirty.
Approve thirty, up to thirty thousand dollars for the, um, the furniture purchase.
Not to exceed the price.
Not to exceed the thirty thousand. Um, the total right now is sitting at about twenty-five thousand, eight hundred, roughly. And then also contingent upon Chelsea or whoever's gonna ask about that conference table to see if we can get it down a little bit.
Naomi makes the motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Sarah seconds. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Number thirteen, um, Water Sewer Storm Street ID number twenty twenty dash four, Lost River Fifth. Jim?
So, what you have before you tonight is a balancing change order number four in the amount of a negative thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and four cents. As we discussed before previously, that this is a balancing change order which balances the contract with the as constructed quantities. Uh, this probably started out with a original contract of five million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, twenty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. It's going to end with a change, uh, final contract amount of five million, five-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and forty cents. So, overall, this is a plus two, twenty-six, nine, oh, four, point, oh, one. There were other change orders that were approved of this project. There was an additional hundred thousand dollars went around the pond. And, um, this one is just like I said, the minus thirty thousand is just balancing out with the, with the final. Some quantities are over, some are under, just disruption deviation.
This is just quantity adjustment based on what I'm seeing here?
Yep.
There's nothing else here that we need to be aware of? Good. Okay, I have no issue with that. Pretty standard fare in order to balance it. I do appreciate that it is to our favor for once, so.
Yeah, that's kinda nice.
Thank you for that. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve balancing the change order number four in the amount of negative thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and four cents.
Sarah makes the motion, second.
I will.
Naomi does the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number fifteen, uh, engineering update.
You are right, the first project we have on the docket for tonight is the connection to Casserole Water. Right now, key contracting is done for the most part, working in the city, they started at the water tower, worked their way across Center Avenue. Down the Free Park Alley, and they'll continue going east along the north side of Wall Avenue. Where they'll go over to sixty-fourth Avenue, or sixty-fourth Street and go up to eighty-second Avenue. Uh, they are tracking, um, pretty well, I think, this is kind of the more challenging part of it, was locating the lines around the tower. Having to shut off water around the tower, having to shut off the city while they did those tie-ins, getting the casing pipe underneath County Road Seventeen. Um, they've managed to hit a couple unknown water services along the Free Park Alley that caused some brief outages last, middle of last week at night. Kind of in, in opportune times, and then today they worked on getting the casing pipe and the carrier through the Wall Avenue. Through Wall Avenue at Free Park entrance, so, once they get all through with that, it's gonna be open field digging until they get up to, up to the tying point, so. I haven't heard anything new, more to update you on as far as the, uh, ETA of the meter pit, but, um, everything else appears to be. Right on with what they were expecting, so, very holy sudden back just a little bit.
This is right across from where you live Naomi, and I was down there today, checking on process.
Yeah.
Pretty pleased with how things have gone, I did notice some, uh, tracking of dirt and mud onto the roadway. However, they did come out after the fact and clean up after themselves, so I was pleased to see that, because I don't like to see that tracked all over our city. Please make sure that we are communicating that to them, that as they are working on major roadways, they need to be cleaning up after themselves. I'm looking at the three week schedule, they're on task here, I don't see anything alarming, Jim, is there anything that we need to be aware of on this?
Nothing right now, it's just a matter of locating those, uh, the big thing was getting, figuring out the piping around the tower, that was a bit of a challenge. We had to reorient our, our tie-in point, so instead of sitting this way, it has to sit this way, but it all went in like it's supposed to. And then, uh, when they managed to find that water service line with the bucket, uh, last, I think it was Wednesday night, so. They're through all that now, we should be able to go with it, so.
I noticed they did have quite a substantial crew out, they're all friendly gentlemen waving at me as I walked by, wondering who the heck I am. You know, crazy lady with the dog walking through the middle of a construction site, um, for the most part, they were good, I was a little bit concerned with the traffic. I'd like to see them when they have that many personnel standing up on the road using cones, so that it minimizes the amount of liability. For anyone that could get hit, especially at a major intersection, other than that, very happy with what I saw, the work was progressing nicely.
All right, second one we have is the Horace proper water replacement project, uh, this one is moving along, slower at times. Uh, what's complete right now is Willow, Willow Court, the lining is complete in Willow Court, they're working on pressure testing and, uh. There's a pressure drop that they're trying to locate at the moment, uh, Purpell, the subcontractor who did the lining flew in on Friday. Offered their advice, but they're chasing a leak right now, they dug down and looked at everything that they've done and they've. Just waiting right now for the leak to show itself, so that area's gonna be on temporary water for a little, little bit longer, but. Uh, when they go ahead and reinstate the services, there's a cork that gets put into the, to the service line, and when they come and drill that cork out. If there's even the slightest deviation, it tends to nick the brass, there's a little O-ring in the Mueller, uh, corporation stops and saddles, and they tend to, tend to leak out there, so. They had quite a few, kind of an alarming number of those that they managed to mis-drill, but that was, uh, K P agent fixed those and replaced them with a saddle and a cork stop that's. It's, uh, suitable, so. Um, replacement continues on, Thue Court is now complete, all right, yeah, Thue Court is complete up to Wall Avenue. They started on Mickey, I believe it was yesterday or Friday, there was some issues last week getting able, being able to isolate the system number one and being able to isolate the system in a functional way that it's supposed to. Uh, we found some intertwined piping that wasn't known, and that's part of the reason this whole project was a replacement of Horace proper, it was just. Records aren't there, the, uh, knowledge of what's down there isn't known, so it was decided to just replace it all, so we know what we're starting with. Or what we have to work with, so, um, one of the things that happened last week, they shut the valve at Thue Court, managed to break it. And then that shut off the water supply to the tower, not quite sure why, it's interconnected, but with, uh. Southwood Drive being isolated right now due to the Willow Court work, found out that it wasn't feeding the tower that way, so. Uh, that hasn't been shut since, and if you do, if it does get shut, it sends pressure through the roof, so, uh, Public Works has got a, uh. Pressure reducer down on Liberty Lane to keep the pressure, keep the pressure and check to where it normally operates, so. Like you said, Mickey, Mickey Mouse, that work started this week, you know, they've been averaging about a block a week, so they've been putting it all back together as they go. I think that they've been doing, trying to do what they can to allow access in and out, uh, knowing your area. There is a lot of services between your duplexes to, or the twin homes to your east, and then a lot in your place, there was a lot of piping they found this morning. There was some questions as to where it actually went, so I think there was some more pavement removal in that part of the world, so.
Yeah, so Sunday we, um, tried to drive out of, on our street and it had rained, you know? And my car like on the little bit of road that was there, it was just sliding into the ditch.
Really?
And so, like it just wouldn't even stand on the road, it was so muddy. So I do have like big concerns on, you know, the questions whether we were going to, um, overlay this in the fall or next year. Next spring, um, I'm concerned about what that would do during the wet months with all that. Mock, I mean, it was asphalt that they tore up, but obviously it's filled with, with dirt and, and clay and, yeah.
They've been tracking out a lot too, driving between the two.
Yeah.
When they broke that valve at, at Mickey Mouse and Thue, they had to quickly excavate that to try to open it up manually. And they were running up and down Mickey Mouse and spreading probably clay and sand and stuff on that too, but we just had a discussion earlier today, Brenton and Public Works and myself about. Uh, paving them this year and, uh, getting it back to a more travel, more, uh.
Yeah.
Pleasant state, I guess is probably the better word.
It definitely is worrisome to think about having that mess all winter long.
Right.
Yeah, I did, I came home quick at lunch and my cat was wet. He likes to sleep in the sink and some water must have blew out of the sink when he was sitting in there.
Interesting.
We've, we've had some interesting things, Jeff, I, I want to pull you in on this conversation, Jeff and I were invited to a contractor meeting. Uh, the contractor that's doing this work last weekend, um, it was a little bit of an accountability meeting, number one, on some other projects. Uh, but number two, we talked a lot about what is actually being discovered, and I, I want it to be made public that. What this contractor is dealing with is unprecedented, I will say, okay? They're dealing with a system that literally hasn't been touched in, oh, fifties, sixties, maybe early seventies. I, I mean, occasional water main break here or there, but really, as they're digging it up, this entire system is just crumbling, okay? So what we're encountering and, and some of the sections of pipe that I saw, that the contractor kindly brought in and the Jim, uh, was happy to show to me. Were of a nature that is not what we deal with in standard construction, okay? So I will tell you, there have been some delays, there have been some problems, there's no excuse for what's going on with this road, I get it, and this project, project probably should have been done. About four councils ago, right, but I can tell you that there is a huge need to upgrade. I am so pleased that we are putting new pipes in after what I saw, thank God, um. We're lucky those pipes have made it as long as they've made it, and I'm feeling, um. I'm feeling really bad for some of the people and the contractor that's working on this, because they're finding. Were not on record, they're finding some work that was done back at that time that may have been kosher, certainly is not today. Um, they're finding valves, things are breaking as they're excavating it up, and I mean, we're not talking, these guys are going down with teeth and just ripping it up, I mean, they're. They're doing some gentle excavation and the stuff is just falling apart, so we're really having some difficulty, I know I took some phone calls, um, this last week. And, and received some messages from folks that, like valves are blowing off their water heaters and, and there were some people that were having some issues in their basement and I was. I, I was ready to pull my hair out, but at the same token, I'm like, okay, we have to get through some of this, because we are upgrading a system that has an age to it, that. There's no comparison to, I'll just put it that way.
There, there was a lot unconventional approaches taken.
Yes.
With this.
Yes, and, and so this is.
What our current system is.
This is a very particular challenge, and you add the weather, the three quarters of monitoring that we had this last week with open excavation, and it just makes everything a damn mess, now. Is there something that needs to be done before things close up? Absolutely, you should not, under any circumstance, be sliding into a ditch as you're trying to drive out of your home. And I hope the conversations you had today are fruitful, but I will be very frank, that, um, there are some things that they are encountering that were definitive unforeseen's. And they're doing the best with what they can, and we are doing the best to keep our sanity working through them with this, I understand the locating has been quite a challenge.
Well, and if I can, if I, you know, hear like my husband and my son like complaining about the work, I, and they know that I'm in the thick of it with you guys.
Right.
And I'm just, I tell them like, let them do their job, you know, it's not, we're not gonna worry about it, they're fixing some old stuff and it's important and. You know, it just, you know, the people that don't have the information like we do that really understand, um, you know, I can imagine their frustration.
Oh.
One of my neighbors said that she saw some kid on a bike turn the water off at the, um, fire hydrant. Last night and they went, their water was off and they went out and turned it back on, like in the middle of the night. Um, so, just, just relaying some things.
Yeah.
Um, is all.
Yeah, we're, we're dealing with some pretty crazy things, but.
And a lot of the old pipes were not marked, um, there's been a lot of exploratory, right Jim?
A lot of exploratory, both of excavators and the time go backs, so.
And unfortunately, it's taking a little longer than what had been anticipated, under normal circumstances, you would not have. This restricted access for this length of time, so we apologize for that, but at the same token, um, I, I really want publicly everyone to understand. That this will be a huge improvement and it's going to be a little bit of an inconvenience, and unfortunately. Everybody in the room was shaking their head a little bit going, how can we make this better? And we literally talked about what resources we could throw at this to speed it up, make it better, give the help that was needed from both the city standpoint and the contractor standpoint. And take a look at if there's any additional equipment and manpower that's needed to help, because they've got three crews on this right now, three crews. And we're still finding surprises, as we call it.
Yeah, I think it is important for the community to know, because it's, it's, it is a frustration and, and we totally get it. I mean, Chelsea and, Chelsea and I are living it with you, you know, when the water's off, yeah, that's not fun, when we have unexpected water shut offs. Yeah, you know, and just so you guys are aware, we're never going to, if a water is shut off and you didn't get a notice, it's not a planned water shut off. It is absolutely, something has happened and we are trying to work on the problem. And, you know, we have to, I am thankful for our public work staff, so thank you, um, Brenton, make sure that they know.
Adam and all.
Because they are working tires tirelessly to try to help the people that are dealing with this water issue and it's not fun. And so we just need to have some grace and we need to remember that things are gonna happen, just like you mentioned, we are dealing with very old pipes.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure and, and like Brenton had said, a lot of the, the blueprints or whatever, the layout of the city, it's not even all documented.
It's not all there.
Like, we don't even.
We have entire sections of the city that are not documented.
And, and I know that sounds terrible, but it absolutely is true, and so we have to remember this. And, um, if we are planning a water shut off, we are going to make sure you have notice of it. So, um, I just wanna say that out loud, because, you know, we all have our frustrations with it, but it's going to be great in the end.
Oh, we can't wait.
And I can't wait.
To be done and the fact that.
I'm, I'm, I'm over.
The state is helping us, we have a cost share going on, I mean, this could not be a, a better thing for our community. We, we just have to get through a, a couple rough patches here.
Yes.
So Chelsea, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, so one, one last thing for me, um, like this morning, I, my sister and I work together in Horus, very close to our homes, and I went, I had to go pick her up. Cause she could not drive to work, so that is a concern for somebody that doesn't, you know, it's kind of our same situation. So definitely, um, you know, if they're gonna block the street, if they can even go ring doorbells.
Yep.
Before they do that, so people can get out of their house before they're blocked in. Cause I know we got the letters and they're gonna be working on it, but what days can you get through, what days you can't, you really don't know, um, until you know.
Chelsea, we gotta buy you something that's bigger than what they got.
Yeah.
That's what you do, you just buy, get something bigger.
The neighbor really like drove, drove through my sister's yard and like, it was a very tight fit and he, I, you could tell he was fed up and he wanted to get out and. You know, and you just don't know what you're gonna get until you start driving down the road, because they're constantly, you know, changing where they're at with things and stuff, so it is frustrating. But, and moving your car outside, if there's a place for people to park outside where they can leave their vehicle, that can be, let them know that they can park here overnight, cause off, um. Um, street parking isn't, overnight isn't allowed, so having an option where people can leave their vehicles would be important, um, so some of that, I think would help.
And just a reminder to the community too, if you're coming across issues, like the roads are bad or you can't get out. I mean, definitely reach out and let, let the staff know, um, or one of us as well, because. I mean, we, we don't want to make things harder, but I mean, knowing that there has to, we have to get the job done, but let us, you know, try to come up with a solution. Would be, would be appropriate too.
How has, how has the volume of calls been here at city hall? Because I know I was in here one day and my phone did not quit ringing.
I actually asked staff to, today, to see if I could talk to the phone about gain, uh, frequency of calls per month.
Yeah.
So I could show you how many, how old the calls have been, you know, four years ago.
Versus what's coming in now.
Because it is extremely high compared to.
It is.
And, and that's in general, that's across the board, it's, you know, when we have, when we have water issues. Uh, we don't keep track of specific number of here's a wire issue, here's not, but you can look at, you can tell when there's spikes, we have water issues pop up or. Uh, same thing like building permits and different things like that, the phones are ringing constantly at city hall, so, on most days, it's. Quite, it's quite common to see all three lines that we have used.
Well, I think Lowell will quit calling you as long as you get him his permit taken care of.
Yeah.
Might help, right Lowell?
Yes.
You're breaking your fingers, getting bloody tips, calling, so, we'll get you taken care of.
Yeah.
All right, Jim, keep going, you got anything else on that?
Um, just on the lines of what, what Chelsea said too, uh, right now Mickey Mouse and Willow Court are on temporary water, so if you see the yellow pipe laying around on the ground, don't touch it, leave it alone.
Do not drive over, don't build RC ramps over.
Definitely don't turn off the wall, that, that's, uh, that's, that's gonna be a bad thing. All right, the next thing we have is Lakeview addition, uh, work since, completed since last summary was the main sanitary sewer mains and services. Uh, the contract planned water main and the storm sewer, work anticipated for this month is road excavation, some great prep, we're in doing that today. Fabric drain tile gravel base and, uh, complete change order one, change order one was the connection to the water system at Front Street, which works out to be just between fourth and fifth. Fourth and fifth streets in Horus, as you can see, the project is fifty percent complete with thirty-two percent of the time, time used. Uh, let's see here, a hundred percent of sewers complete, ninety-five-ish percent of the water distribution's complete, a hundred percent of the storm sewer and streets, I just started working on those today, so. That one is moving on at a pretty good clip, next one is Terragarden's third edition.
Hold on a minute, fifteen D, I think I have the wrong piece of paper, PDF here.
They don't match each. F was Lakeview.
Let me see if I can find.
D is Southdale.
There's two Ds listed on the. There they are.
Okay.
There's two of them.
F is supposed to be Southdale Farms.
Give me a second, I gotta just double check here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Water distribution's ninety nine percent, change order one, they're ninety percent done, all the main lines for storm and everything are in.
Yep, that's.
We're still working obviously on streets, are they planning to get that in yet this year or is that gonna wait until?
Residential streets in this year, but the commercial streets are next year completion date.
Okay, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Okay, next thing we have is Terragarden's third edition, uh, this one is forty percent complete with fifty four percent of the time time used. Uh, work since last uh summary, we completed the water main services, storm sewer mains and laterals. Work anticipated for this month is roadway roadway prep and paving, sidewalk shared use path, sinus edrum, upseating, hydromelching. Uh, what to note on this one is they started the uh, uh, street work this week, hoping to get curb and gutter in within the next week or two. They are going to be very close to their deadline with this one, I have a feeling, so.
Uh, we're gonna let them still seed this month?
Uh, they they, yes.
Is it gonna take?
Um, usually it does.
Your obligations to have it take anyways if it doesn't.
Right, there's a guarantee of establishment period, they have to honor.
That's all I wanna know, because I think all these companies frantically in October, getting all this hydro seeding done. And within a week, it all freezes and then it's crap and nothing comes up in the spring, so I wanna guarantee and I wanna make sure, if not, I wanna hold off till spring. Don't ask for much, do I?
That's why I was quick to point out, there is a typically guarantee or warranty.
Thank you.
You know, when it, when a contractor seeds like that, it's uh at their own risk.
Yep.
And if it doesn't take, then they have to come back, they have to have, I believe it's seventy percent.
Seventy percent.
Seventy percent is uh establishment in the area for it to be accepted, so.
Good.
That's pretty much on all of our projects, I believe.
Excellent, we have some beautiful hydro seeding that has taken over at the schools, over at the ballparks, over at the football field. I mean, I have been watching this and it was done right before I left for Texas, I came back three weeks later, four weeks later. And it's gorgeous, it's establishing well, it's turning out well, it's looking wonderful, but we're pushing it, huh?
Little rain helps them.
Little rain, what did wonders, but I tell you what, we're pushing it here, so.
So it looks like they're burning hot on that project, are they actually getting? Fifty four percent time used versus forty percent complete?
That was gonna be nip and tuck, I do think it's going to be up against the the deadline on that one. But I have nothing, our staff meeting got pushed up tomorrow, so I'll a little more tomorrow about the status of that one.
Isn't this the one where they had some issues with lead times? This is one of the first ones that hit us with lead times, wasn't it?
No, this one they didn't have any of that, they just got started a little bit later than what they thought, Lakeview I think had some.
Yeah, Lakeview, that was the one I'm thinking of, okay.
And then the uh fifteen F, which we, which should have been Southdale Farms third, Southdale Farms third is seventy percent complete with seventy percent of the time used. Completion date on that one is eleven six twenty twenty one, uh, work completed since the last summary is the curb and gutter on Christianson Boulevard. Christianson is the east west road that goes off of County seventeen and cuts to the east. Concrete paving on Christianson Boulevard was completed and the Batumis paving was completed uh week before last. Work anticipated for this month is the concrete stubs off of Christianson Boulevard. Turn lanes on Hundred Seventeen were started today after a.
Oh, good, they did start them today.
They did start.
They haven't started them yet, I was.
No, they started, they started today, uh pond excavation, street lighting and concrete flatwork. Um, we can see everything in the underground world is a hundred percent complete, curb and gutters ninety, pavement eighty, Batumis pavement is a hundred and they haven't started the streetlights yet, so. On this project, they're doing a little different for the streetlights, they're gonna use precast bases, they're gonna drill a hole and put them in instead of this typical cast in place, so.
Interesting.
This is the first one where we're gonna try that on and and Parsons, Parsons recommended it and they're gonna, we're gonna give it a whirl. So as part of this project, it's Hundred Seventeen gets lit all the way from, all the way from uh basically Sunnyside South.
Yeah.
So we'll be lit now from Hundredth Avenue all the way through um up to Southdale Farms third.
And they're using precast bases?
Yes.
At what depth do those bases go down?
Six feet, sound right? Six feet I wanna say. Their Minda has a standard plate that they, Minda uses, has a standard, standard plate they use and that's what they submitted for for Lakeview, so.
Okay.
You wanna see it?
Yeah, will you send it to me? I'm concerned about the frosteve on most, on precast. I don't want lights in the spring to look like this.
Yeah. Okay, uh, the next thing I had on here was a drinking water state revolving project, drinking water state revolving fund projects. Questionnaires were due last Friday, we've knocked two of those off the list that we used to apply for, so the two this year were. Water tower and water tower improvements, those are the two projects, typically we've had the water replacement, we've had a connection to Castro on there. Uh, those were, were in the process of constructing, so they're off of the list. The last thing I had over here was a TAP grant application cycle is starting, um, in the past, we've worked with Chelsea on those. Do we wanna continue with Chelsea or does that fall somewhere else? As far as what we apply for. Um, we've been very successful in getting shared use path funds uh between recreational trails, got phase one, phase two was the.
We need more too.
We do, so um.
We do, we have the next phase of County Seventeen, we've been incrementally going north of County Seventeen, that's been the main project.
Going, we need to go further.
That we've been seeking out, so.
I'm literally walking on the side of the road with my dog and that's not good.
So we're like two years behind in what we've been awarded ones, or are we one or two years behind in what we've got, been awarded?
We were awarded one last year, two actually.
Yeah.
So we're all the way up to Southdale.
You're up, no, you're out to the roundabout.
No, we're up to Lions. Cause we had the tap.
You're up to just north of the cemetery and the storage for that path on the west side, yes.
We jumped to the east side after the roundabout, right? And then we went up to like the cemetery road.
We got tapped for one to get up to the roundabout and then we have another one, RTP.
No, we did RTP first and we got tapped and the tap one will be constructed in twenty two.
Yeah.
Which gets us to the roundabout, oh, then we did get the third phase through TA and that's the Southdale Farms.
Yeah.
And then we got the Center Avenue Multi Mobile System, so.
Yes, so.
Okay, so we'll get the Southdale Farms in the next three years.
Just to Southdale Farms, the entrance?
Yes.
Where the cemetery is?
Yes.
Cause we've been, we've been.
We can only do about two thousand feet at a time with the grant funds we receive.
So there's a maximum amount you could get, the federal funding on this?
With the amount of buildout that is happening in that area of Southdale Farms between seventy six and sixty fourth, no offense, but we gotta buck that up a little more. Cause you're gonna have kids needing to get to school.
The funding that we're seeking, that we scope out the projects to maximize the most amount of funding that we get, so we don't have to put as much local towards it. So that's why we've been incrementally going up about two thousand feet every year and pretty much every year, that's what we're getting. Uh, we have funding for next year as one phase and then another phase the year after that.
They do two years.
Twenty three for the Southdale.
So we've been very successful?
No.
I know, but.
In getting those dollars, but yeah, we've been.
It's, I mean.
It's gonna be all built out by then, I mean, you'll have kids on bikes trying to get to the school.
Well, right.
We're gonna have to figure something out, because you you can't get from that side of Southdale Farms down to the roundabout. And you can't get over to sixty sixth or potentially sixty third, there's nothing for those kids.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's why these grand dollars, we've been trying to maximize the dollars, so. That's a challenge.
There's a lot of kids that don't have access to the school.
I know, we need to, we we can do better.
That's why we've been seeking out the RTP and the TAP funds, so every year we submit projects for both and. I believe we got three last, or the, over the past year, we had, between RTP and TAP, we've gotten selected for three projects out of those two funding sources.
Okay.
So we are gaining the grants and fairly consistently too.
Thank you for.
It's just that we're, we're not, we're not gaining huge scopes because, yeah, we could put in for it. But they're not gonna award us any more money for those, so we have to make sure that we're taking what we could get. And sculpting them to where we maximize the dollars.
We can.
So what about the access to your development, is that um linking to Southdale anywhere? No, nowhere.
My development doesn't link to Southdale, I I don't know.
Future.
Uh, in the future, so that was discussed when seventy sixth avenue was constructed and the county was hesitant about putting a crossing. Right at the entrance there, just because it's uncontrolled.
Yeah.
They prefer down, down to the east or back to the west, so that's where where that kind of got left off, so.
What is, what is that street?
Sixty six.
Sixty six, so sixty six will never connect to anything, it's gotta be what, east or west of that street.
No, it'll connect.
Sixty sixth is gonna go from seventy sixth avenue to sixty fourth avenue and somebody's gonna push to get it done on uh Southdale Fourth.
Well, that's, so that's what I'm saying, is is that going to be a connection for the kids anytime sooner or?
I don't, I don't know, are we gonna have sidewalks on there?
So if the fourth addition would go, we're on the third right now, so the fourth would be the next one and if, like Ross said, if the fourth one. Construct sixty third, sixty sixth, we haven't been putting roads in without sidewalks or shared use paths.
All the, all the new roads have been getting sidewalks and shared use paths.
Good, we can make sure that sidewalk isn't. Circus street.
Once we have the application, then we can discuss it with.
We'll talk about that offline, I don't wanna belabor this, but at the same token, we, it has to be reasonable for snow removal. And it has to be reasonable for these kids to traverse, because they're gonna be in between two major thoroughfares here with Cheyenne and veterans. And then you got seventy six and all that traffic shooting toward that school and I don't know if you guys have tried to cross that street in the morning. But from about seven o'clock to about nine AM, you might as well just sit at the entrance there and smoke a couple cigarettes. Because you're not going anywhere, okay? So we have to look at the possibility of maybe doing a yield or something. I'm surprised that this particular school district does not have any type of slowdown to twenty miles an hour in the school zone during certain hours, you know? I mean, I don't wanna be a pain in the butt, but we really have to put a little bit of attention on that. Because there was kids out there today, I was coming back from doing my walk, I went all the way down the wall, all the way over, all the way back checking construction, right? And half the school was out, it was lunchtime and all these kids were scattered on the road, on the sidewalks, everywhere and I went. Ah, and there's, you know, diesel dogs trucking coming flying down seventy sixth avenue. And I'm literally out in the street with my dog, like moving the children this way, because there's no place else for them to go, so. We do need to look at some sort of control there during times when the children are out, so I would say. And I'm I'm lovingly calling these middle schoolers children, cause in my eyes, they are, as long as they're under eighteen, they're all little ones to me, but you know that. That seven to nine timeframe, lunchtime, when they let them out, cause they all let them out on the backside of the building where that little bus stop is. And then again, that, you know, two thirty to four o'clock or whatever, because the traffic just flies through there.
So can we do like a flashing sign or something?
Okay, now, in um Eighth Street in Morehead for crossing that major thoroughfare with the college kids.
Yep.
They have, you know, you push the cross and the light goes to red. It's a red, it's it's a, it's a full stop crosswalk. That may be what we're going to do.
Yeah, I don't know what kinda studies we have to have for the volume of children, but you look at the number of houses going into that area.
We don't have to have studies, we own the road.
Well, we'll co- I'll coordinate with Jim and we'll review options and then come back to council after we have some options to lay out for council and he can give you an idea of. What it would entail, costs, different things like that, so.
I don't think we need to go crazy, but I do think we need to apply a little bit of common sense. If we could, that'd be great.
Anything else, Jim? Got a little thing for you, uh, two things actually, um, people are hitting me up for uh getting compensated for damages. For uh up against Maple Lakes and then also um MVP needs to go back on Hundred and Fourth and fix their damages, so.
What type of compensation on Maple Lakes?
Uh, leave Sue, probably sent you an email. Sue and Robin, maybe even Jim, I'm not even sure, but. Damages to their bushes from uh construction in Maple Lakes.
Oh my god, that was from the spring.
Yeah, so, uh, Jim was wondering if we should have brought it up with KPH uh last week and. It was enough being talked about, um, so.
They need to fix that though.
I agree, I'm not, I'm not backing down from it.
Noted, I don't, I didn't see anything, but I'll look closer.
Okay. If you don't, I mean, I'll, I'll make sure you get it.
Yep.
And then like I said, MVP, it looks like they're done, um, they've cleared.
I noticed that today when I came out, so I'll get ahold of next Saturday, make sure they're.
On Hundred and Fourth.
Okay.
I was there to witness it and take pictures of it, so.
Anything else, Jim? Do we want to jump back to Ready Tech's update?
Yep.
Do you wanna give us just a quick update?
Sure, yeah, sorry for the late, I just wanted to start with stuff. So just uh, just kinda wanted to explain what's going on and what we're trying to accomplish before freeze up. Uh, so we're trying to get connectivity to our central office, uh, hopefully be putting equipment in there in about three weeks. And get power in there and that, get that turned up, uh, we're still working with the county to get connectivity down seventeen, that's all been going good since. Everything came up there, but the areas we're focusing on getting uh ready. Or that have the main line done and could be connected sooner than the rest of it is north of Wall Avenue. And then, but that would also include Lost River Development, so. Uh, there is potential for like around the lagoons, I forget what that's called. East of Nelson, but right now we're focused on, everybody got a letter north of Wall and then in uh Lost River. So we're trying to get crews in here to do pipe from our, the main line that's already done in those developments from there to their house, so at least we could. Do installs in the winter if they were wanting it, so, but we've had tons of interest, I think we already have like a hundred and fifty people that have said they would take it, so. And that's with little marketing, so.
Well, fiber to the home, a direct fiber connection?
Yeah.
Not a bad thing, good.
Has anybody got any questions or concerns or?
No, we appreciate the update.
Yeah, we've been trying to, anything comes up, we try and get out there the same day or. Even on weekends, show up and try and solve anything that's happened with us contractors, but it's been pretty good here so far, so.
How's everything coming on your building? I noticed we had quite a bit of concrete work done, how's that coming?
Yeah, they got most of the concrete work done, except some of the finishes before they can do walls and stuff, but the walls should be. I believe it's next week and then they're, the main thing they're waiting for is getting the rafters built. And those get built the eighteenth and I do believe they should be delivered by the twenty fifth or so. So once that gets a outside structure, it should be faster, I would guess, I'm sure they wanna close it.
I wanna see Christmas lights this year. Good.
Yeah, and the main part where we can put our equipment, well, that will be sooner functional than the rest of it, so.
Excellent.
That's mainly waiting for a electrical contractor out of Morehead, so.
I saw your new fine roofing there with tires on the top.
Yeah, it's a temporary roof, so we, cause that's gonna have a, that'll be the floor of the second floor.
Yeah.
So they wanna, it's gotta be waterproof when we put our equipment in there, so the tires is temporary, I promise.
Good, has anybody gotten any questions from people? I know initially I had quite a few people that called me with questions about what are these flags in my yard? And I was able to explain that, have you guys had feedback from people, concerns, anything, Brett?
We get regular calls and I've been in touch with Jake and I know we have Brian's number, Brian Snyder's number, two residents, so they can ask questions specifically. Uh, did have one resident ask about the flags and why they're going location over on third or fourth. They'll probably, if they have reached out to you, they will be, so.
I, I wanna, we're not trying to go a couple of different lines, most of the utilities are in the back there and. Uh, because they mostly built their sheds right on the property line, there's really legal place for utilities to go, so.
Oh, no easement there?
There's a, it's only five foot wide, so there's not, not a lot of room for air there, but there is a tent, but he's been in front, so we're gonna utilize that.
A lot of times when you talk to them and explain to them what you're doing, they know it's for the better, so they're, a majority of people are happy, so.
Good.
Yeah.
But if you do get any complaints, send them to us, we don't wanna inundate the already busy city, so send them to me or Brian or whoever, so.
Yeah, our staff is getting those calls quite a bit, we do have quite a few locates, uh, we've asked, uh, Ray Tech, I've spoken. Uh, we've asked, uh, Ready Tech, I've spoken with Jake about, uh, just them being, everybody being conscious about the locates they're called in. Our staff is swamped, they locate frequently, whereas they came, uh, two, two public works guys almost, almost a full day, every day, doing locates right now. So it's quite, quite a distress on our public work staff where they're doing just that and not able to knock out other things, so. But like I said, I have talked to Jake about that, so they're aware of that. And any other items that pop up, we discuss or we touch base, so.
Do you want anybody else, cuz if Brian sends an email to, I don't know, I'm not sure who's all, but the like the areas they're gonna be working on and potential start dates in other areas, so if anybody else wants that email, Brian can add you.
Send a nice color quote about what it's like, where we're working and where we anticipate going next, area after that. And wants to be, I'm happy to, I sent it out about, what's it the other week?
Are we providing updates on our webpage for that email?
I don't believe we've been having updates provide, being a private utility. Um, when residents do call, we'll update on, say, this area that is being worked on. Uh, in general, right now, we've asked Ready Tech to stay on the east side of Congress Road seventeen because our wire project for the most part is on the west side. So that's where we've been, they've been focusing their efforts now. I know they're doing touch-up work, like Jake said, over Lost River area and some other areas, but, uh, they're gonna be doing the next round of work.
Yeah, one of the subcontractors got injured and he's working in, uh, or they were finishing up like Southwood, Northwood.
Those areas that had started, uh, and were about three quarters finished because of the injury. And we sent a crew in there to finish that this week, there's not, actually, we got much left to do with that.
Yeah.
Since you brought that up, I do have a question about, uh, Wall Avenue, uh, West of seventeen, do you want us to stay off the deck now? We have all the locates are called in there and, uh, I just wanna know if I can tell the contractor if they can go ahead or if they're holding.
I think they're probably coordination with engineering and public works, so until they say yes, they're good.
Hadn't we talked about this today a little bit, but.
Yeah.
We didn't come to a conclusion, so I would stay off of it for now.
If you do need updates, uh, if council, if you would like updates, uh, that Ready Tech does provide us, please let me know and I'll forward it on to council.
I'm just curious.
Just to make sure there's not a.
We got those nice little posts that go out, you know, notifying us when there's gonna be a water outage or whatnot. And I'm wondering if they're taking the time to give us the update, if we could add that to that, you know what I'm saying? Just a simple little blob that says, um, the Ready Tech utility is going to be working in this area. And just something that gives people a heads up, because otherwise, I'm finding that we do field a lot of calls and certainly not as many as city staff, but people going, what's going on in our area? And if we know that's coming or if a little bleep is put out, I don't know how long it takes you, Sally, to throw something like that together. But, um, I tell you, it's pretty helpful and people pay attention to that and.
And they like it, they like the.
They do, they like the updates a lot, so if you're, if you're taking the time to put together that update and just say, we're gonna be working in this area this week, this area next week, something like that, two sentences.
Yeah.
You know, that would be extremely helpful. I would love the updates personally, you know me, the more, the merrier.
Me too.
Um, and then I get a chance to get out and take the pup with me and go check it out, so.
Yeah, it's funny how people don't like, live a busy life, there's one guy, we put a vault in his front yard and he, the only reason he found out that we were doing it is cuz we had to replace, one of his sprinkler heads got bumped or.
Something.
So they fixed it and then he's like, by the way, what are you guys doing or why, why are you here? What rock do you live under?
There, there are a lot of people that just go about their normal day.
Yeah, well, and they're so.
Bother themselves with these types of things. They figure it's just all part of infrastructure.
And Lost River is a construction bomb gone off out there, so they're just, just another truck, I guess, but.
Yeah, no, and we do, we do frequently get questions from people, but we might have heard that this has been going on, I might have seen flags, things like that. But people that don't work in that industry don't pay attention to that and, and nor do they have to, it doesn't.
They only care unless.
They don't care, as long as their stuff works, they can mow their lawn, they're happy, right?
They own their property and then, and they're going to their own grass, then they care.
Right, and if they're like me, they pull flags out very early because I don't like to mow around flags, which is bad.
I give two weeks and the flags come up.
Yep. They got about ten days and that's it.
Legally, you get twenty-one, so I'd be careful, I'd be careful at two weeks.
No, now, when you're doing it four times a summer, out in my yard.
Yeah, just think if you live in seventeen, it'd be all summer.
All summer.
For multiple projects.
They get more flags put up.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy.
It is.
We have, anybody has anything, just let us know, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Well, thanks for coming. Brent, update?
Okay, a couple items update for you, we will have to have a special assess, or a special meeting on the Twenty-Fifth of October, that is a special assessment objection hearing, that'll be at five PM. Typically, we do that as a separate meeting, cuz otherwise it'll take a lot longer of the council meeting. So, uh, we typically do that as a separate one.
What date, Twenty-Fifth?
Twenty-Fifth, yeah.
Okay.
Fire Hall, we are working with them on space and revising the, or the dollars and space needs, different things like that. Uh, Chelsea has been in communication with the school district about, could we rent out space at the school? Um, there are some issues tied with that, such as being able to stream meetings or put cameras in there. Uh, also availability, they're saying until the new high school is done, they're saying availability and they would be looking at places in the classroom.
Yeah, they didn't bring us much solution also, uh, or they didn't really bring us an option as a space. They also, um, price point, I think if we can work with the fire hall, you know, we should be fairly close. Sorry, I don't mean to have a bomb to look on my face, but it's kind of a bummer because, in my opinion, I feel like they want to have a partnership, so. Well, they don't have public wifi and they, you know, setting up cameras and leaving them up, those were a couple of the, the, um, and then just right now, they didn't, yeah, they didn't have the space that they were, there, there's a lady that's in charge of the rentals. And so I spoke with her and she had spoken to the different schools, so. Um, it's not like it's out of the question, it's just, um, we'll, we'll keep the discussions going and see, you know, kind of how it plays out, I guess.
I'm hoping we can come to some agreement with our partners at the Fire Hall.
So we're working.
Something that's fair.
I've been working with Steve, we're a fire here and are trying to compare apples to apples, so. So the numbers I was telling you, ballpark wise, we're blocking off every Monday, Tuesday. Well, if we don't block off every Monday, Tuesday, we block off just what we need specifically on our meeting dates. If we have to have a special meeting, then it's at the mercy of what's available for blocking off time, so that's a challenge.
I don't think we really have much concern, cuz those are somewhat, like if it's Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday.
Right.
You know.
And there's other areas that they'd be working with us on, such as, you know, we might be able to house some staff there during the remodel time and different things like that, so we're going through what makes sense. And he gave me some edits there and I'll go through those within the next few days. And we'll get back with Steve and we'll continue to refine it and then hopefully bring back something or bring something to council. That's why I didn't bring an actual proposal to council yet, so. But we are many other options, I know that they've been interested in working with us of, like, the cameras. You have the different cameras here for the live streaming, where we can put those in that room at the Fire Hall. Uh, where can we put, you know, like TV or projector or something, so you can see the PowerPoint easier? Uh, so we've been discussing different options like that, what, what can we do? I'm gonna meet with our IT, uh, we're meeting with Ready Tech tomorrow, meeting with their IT services side. In regards to checking out Fire Hall, are there any other tweaks, is their wifi strong enough, would they need to upgrade that? So we're looking at the options of, can we make it work?
This isn't a permanent residence, I mean, you can bring an Arlo camera over there and stream, you know what I mean?
We have to be able, can support the cameras and the different setups that we have. Uh, we've ran into IT issue, or I, issues such as, uh, our different capacity on our, sorry, I'm not an IT person, I look at Jeff. I, I believe it's like our router, we've ran into issues there, ran into issues of the, how much capacity we've had for the service, the bandwidth. Uh, we ran into issues just even just with the cameras alone. So there's a lot of different, a lot of different things we need to check off and make sure it works.
And I, I appreciate the due diligence on all of that, I, I don't wanna minimize that under any circumstance. I, I'm not an IT person and I, I literally kiss the floor of the people that are because I get lost in a closet some days. But I can honestly say that, you know, this is a very temporary situation. And for this period of time, we're not looking at doing complete renovations to the Fire Hall. If necessary, we don't live stream, we record and then post things later, you know, we can make things like that work.
And that's it, we're looking at our options, so.
Okay.
We're looking at our options to see what can we do. And if live stream is important to the council, then that's where we, like I said, we're looking at what we could do, so. It, and I know you say temporary, but also is likely going to be a couple of years worth. Because we get a new city hall, the construction, the timeframe, everything.
True.
Where we have to think through that this may be something that would have to be a dynamic that works for two years or even longer, so.
Russ, did you have something?
Well, she was, I think she, when she was saying temporary, I think she was misunderstanding because city council and planning and zoning, once we leave here, we're never coming back here.
That's true, I, uh, that's true, yeah, you're right, I forgive me, did have a brief misunderstanding. I wasn't realizing that they were looking at a two-year span here minimum, which is going to be an extended time period.
It's longer than two years, cuz if, cuz if you started your building process, you might have one in two years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be times and things are, you know.
That, that's why we're looking at all these different elements to make sure.
That's true.
It isn't a Band-Aid approach or.
Yeah. What's that?
We wanna be friends, you are friends with the fires.
They have been good partners with the city.
Good.
Yeah.
We need to continue that.
Um, our staff is working with Chelsea on exterior bid. Uh, last council meeting, we talked about the remodel, the inside, we're working on a bid for the siding, windows and the step. Uh, our staff has worked up some concepts to kind of give City Hall a facelift here, so it doesn't have as much of a blah to it, uh, but also keeping costs in mind and make sure.
Very into, you know, making sure we follow, like, making sure we set an example with our ordinances and, you know.
Excellent.
We, we also had a structural engineer look at City Hall, uh, there are going to be adjustments we have to make, so we're looking at getting the prices for that, so we know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
There are structural changes.
There are gonna be some structural that we need to look at or that we need to address. And we're working out to see how, what the costs are tied to that, so I don't have numbers tied to it.
The, the, um, the post supports under here are, I'm guessing, four by four or six by six is what they are on concrete, uh, footings. And they're calculated for a twenty per, twenty pounds per square foot loading, load factor. And code for office space is sixty-five per square foot, yeah? So, um, adding some more posts with footings is, is kind of what we're looking at, um, so. Well, that can't be too expensive.
You'll add.
Isn't it just a piece of wood and you just?
Are they cast in place?
Technically, it probably isn't that much money, it's time, you know, and like, it's the time and the contractors, you know, nothing's cheap.
Right, I, I let you guys know that I have a gas can and a match, man, I was serious.
We are, we are, I know Keith is working with the structural engineer to, cuz he had a couple other ideas, what could be done. They're evaluating that also, and then we'll be getting with the contractor to see, okay, what would that entail? So I just wanna make sure you're aware of that, what is going on.
I think before we start anything here, we better have all those costs in hand.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure that we know where we're at before we start. I agree, the staff is on top of each other here, they need a working space yesterday, they need something better. And I like the fact that we're gonna be able to utilize this space for public works even after the fact. But if this gets a little too crazy, we might wanna look at something different, I don't know.
I'm starting to feel like a little nervous because it just seems like one thing, getting added on to the next and I really wasn't wanting to put that much money into this place, if we're gonna spend the money, then. Well, let's see how much it comes back, you know, when you talk about. But we already approved two hundred and some thousand dollars and now we're thirty thousand dollars for. Well, but the furniture you'd have to buy no matter where you go, you know? Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I think, it's, it's just, it's kind of making me a little nervous. We're not coming back with any changes to that two fifty, like, you know, ideally, this is going to be still. I know, but you just said we might have to add to the posts under the floor.
But we don't know, we don't know what that's gonna be yet, let's wait and see what the pricing comes back at.
This was a potential.
It was.
When we discussed it before.
We did discuss it at the last meeting, I'm aware of that, I just, I don't wanna see a structural cost getting so skyrocketed that it would make sense for us to do something different.
Yeah, and, right, and we also, um, have that limit, you know, when we get over that limit, then we have to. I mean, I'm not saying that because I don't agree, obviously, I like made the motion to move forward with the whole concept. I'm just, like, the more we start talking about this and that, like, it starts adding up and I just, I don't know, it's like, would that money have been better used just going forward with something different? You know, I'm just, I don't know. Yeah, well, and we can talk about that too, once we know what this entails, you, you and I can have a conversation, I can call you and we can sit down and talk about it too, so you're more comfortable with it.
Yeah, did you have a comment?
And I'm gonna back up on the inspection side group. Uh, when I come over here to work on the plans and stuff, it's either we come in here or they come over to our place. Because there's no elbow room with their people, you know, there is just no.
Right.
No space, a little light item, don't forget, arson is a riskful offense. So I don't wanna hear a gas can is.
Better look old.
There's a real fast way to.
You really gotta watch your mouth at these meetings. I guess, no, if, like Sarah says, if we need to like look at other, I mean, there, like, other options, like, is there space to rent?
There is not.
Anywhere. Well, you'd be looking at like a strip mall space like Vibe probably.
Yeah.
Um, and you'd have to fit that up, which would, you know.
And then you're like, we, cuz we did look at that, uh, about a year and a half, two years ago, we looked at doing a rent type situation and by the time you put in the rent cost, the camp fees, the outfit, all those different things, the costs were six figures roughly a year for what we were looking at.
Yeah, it's wild.
It was, it was very expensive, I mean, we're looking at, uh, renting that twenty to twenty-five dollars per square foot rental.
Yeah, and so if we, if we went down that road, it would probably be more of like a, a ten-year plan, maybe? Um, and then the amount that you're gonna spend in rent over those ten years versus i- if you were to put it into a property you own, you're paying down, you know, that, that mortgage. We're doing everything we can to make sure we're saving money and like doing. Yeah. What's absolutely best for not just the staff, but for the community as well. Yeah. And I just wanna make sure that the, you know, the community members know that we're not just spending money.
We represent them and this is something that we take very seriously.
Yes.
And so making these types of decisions, we just wanna make sure we're, we're aware of everything upfront and weighing all the options.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, so we'll get that number and then, you know, evaluate it and we can have a conversation. Okay, that sounds good.
Other news, I have good news, I do promise that.
Okay.
Uh, one thing I'm working on a request for, uh, funding through the state's allocation of ARPA funds. Uh, one thing, working on a request for uh, funding through the state's allocation of ARPA funds. So we're playing a request in for that to hopefully get funding from the state for connection to Fargo. So we'll be having that here soon, and then also uh. The temporary refinancing bu, or temporary bond twenty twenty-one B, we had the pricing last week. The pricing came in at point six percent, the last temp bond we had was point six five percent, they were very, very happy. Uh, Colliers was extremely happy about that, that's where the Lakeview and Arrowood subdivisions were the temp bonds for them. Uh, like I said, the last temp bond we had was at point six five percent, it went down to point six when the market has been fairly stable. They said that they haven't seen fluctuations at all and we actually went down, so very, very happy about that. Colliers was very happy, we were very happy, obviously, our parameters resolution was set for two percent to where we could. Say, yep, move forward, so to come in at point six, I will not complain about that. So that was very good news. Other than that, that's what I have.
Cool.
Okay, cor, for your reports, uh, mayor is not here tonight, so council member Sarah.
Yes, I, I don't have much this week, it's been pretty quiet, we do have some meetings coming up, which will be good. Um, anyway, I looked at some new plans and whatnot that have been submitted, but nothing, uh, nothing crazy yet. A lot of it has been within our own infrastructure, so, or fit up, so it hasn't required planning and zoning. So I don't have any updates on that right now. Russ, unless you wanna add anything?
All right, Naomi?
Um, I don't really have a whole lot, I do have a question though, where are we at with the new city website?
We are working, we're working on that, we're not too far away from going live, however, the phone keeps answering.
The what?
The phone keeps answering, we've had a lot of phone calls and our staff hasn't been able to.
Okay.
Dig into that project, but I know that we're not too far away from going live.
Like a month, two?
Uh, like, I'm hoping for around a month.
Okay.
Uh, if you do, if you would like to see a sneak peek at the website, please let me know and we could arrange time.
Okay.
Where staff can show you what it looks like.
Okay, well, I'll let that person know.
Yeah.
Um, don't have a whole lot, I guess, we have the Halloween event that. They've been working really hard on, um, that's gonna be on the twenty-ninth. So everybody get your kids in their costumes and come on out for some fun, it'll be really good.
There is a possibility I may be back by then.
Okay, good.
So I will let you know.
So we have.
As we get closer.
So we do have, we're, we got some judges lined up for the costume contest that will be going on that night, so.
And some awesome prizes, what's that?
Awesome prizes.
Like, is it the, um, is the big prize for best family costume?
Yep.
Which is like a stay at Arrowood Resort?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
Good job, Sally, Sally shaking her head back there.
Yeah, so that, that would be a great um, prize for a family, so super fun.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I think, am I missing anything, Sally? Nope, that's it.
Okay, um, I, we went over the remodel stuff that I've been working on with Keith. I don't think I have anything else to report, so what did Jeff?
Um, make mine real quick, uh, I wasn't meeting with Sarah, um, was it a couple Mondays ago?
Uh, just last week, actually.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a week ago, holy crap, yeah, a week ago.
And there was a very interesting talk, uh, seeing the KPH explain all the problems with the city, uh, and the wire project, uh, I do feel for them, actually. Um, I've had the opportunity to sit down in quite a few of these special assessment uh, commission meetings. Um, obviously, we got noticed that we're gonna be meeting on the twenty-fifth, uh, so as a reminder for that, everybody that uh, still is protesting.
When are those due, though?
They should have already mailed in their letters of protest, I believe, correct?
Well, they do, so if anybody has objection.
No, when does it go to the, the county?
November one.
It's gotta get through you first.
Yeah, it's good through the city council.
How many, how many days is that, do we have then?
Plus than a week.
Twenty-one.
I'm sorry, I gotta pull up my calendar.
The fu, uh, a week later is when it's due to the county, so we send the list to the county after it's gone through city council.
And when, and we will be seeing that on the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, five o'clock.
Yeah, that's when the objection hearing is.
When the letters due, cuz it has to be written right into the city council.
The layers are due on that day, or at, it would have to be due before the meeting.
So they could drop, be drop box out there?
They could hand it to me at four fifty-nine and I could take that and hand it to the council or make a copy and hand you a copy of the.
Is everybody, I don't know, you probably know better than I do, Jeff, do they, did everybody get good adequate notice that they actually have to write it?
That I don't know.
Cuz it, it has to be in writing, correct?
For the city council, my understanding is that it would need to be in writing, your objection for the special assessing commission. And talking with Lucas afterwards, it was, or uh, just before the meeting, he was telling me that we could take verbal or in writing. And we're encouraging folks though, to still get it in writing, now there's a record of it. Uh, for the council though, I believe they do have to put it in writing.
Are they being provided notice of the new updated numbers?
I believe they are at that, I'll check with Lucas on it, I believe they are.
Otherwise, you can have a lot of people here for me for no reason.
Yeah, so, and that would be three weeks, three weeks from today, so.
Is there like, uh, maybe can make sure that they all know, like, hey, like, another reminder?
That's a layer Jeff was just talking about.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, cuz there were changes in the values from the first layers.
Okay, gotcha.
Special assessing commission did make adjustments to many of the projects, some projects, very minor adjustments, other projects, a little more significant. Um, so we'd like, I will talk with Lucas when he's in office. So, and touch base about the layers, I believe our intentions were to send layers though. And propose some outs.
I was not at that meeting, I would like an update.
I was not at the very last two, cuz you guys had one at seven o'clock in the morning. So, I wasn't at that one at seven o'clock in the morning, cuz I didn't know about, but the one I had one, I was in a meeting with the mayor, so I missed the last two, but.
I think we all need, I think we all need to get up to speed on what's going on there.
Yeah.
That's been a pretty hot topic here.
Projects were special assessed.
Yep.
Objections were held for those, only five for a council.
Five for council, two for department, Tuesday night, there was objections heard from. So for Maple Lake Estates, there was objections from Country Acres, there was objections from Farmland. That one got tabled till Wednesday, till Thursday. Thursday, there was some discussion as to what was to be done with the Farmland, Agland. That was brought forward to the special assessment commission upon Friday, when they approved it. And I'm not gonna tell you exactly what they did, because I would probably tell you wrong at the moment, because I can't remember.
You don't have sheets of truth.
I don't have my sheets on, okay? The other one would have been the sewer line down with the Country Acres and it was the same there. The Country Acres, they weren't, weren't objecting to that because of the policy that the city council had enacted that the mall goes on the pot.
Correct.
The Agland was objecting to the amount of their assessment.
Who's the owner on the Agland?
There's multiple, there's four big parcels out there that own it and their, their objection was that it's not, they're not using it right now. They don't plan on developing it. So basically, what happened is, is that the amount of assessment based on the benefit for those two projects, it could be placed on Maple Lake Estates. Was placed on Maple Lake Estates, so in the parameters that they set, where the benefit can't exceed the assessment. They went too tough, they went as high as they could with that on the Maple Lakes Edition. To try to minimize the effect on the um, unapproved Agland. So those two both went all the way till Friday morning. Eighty-second Avenue was objected to by landowners in Rudes Edition, which is kinda where our office is. Morris Lutheran Church and um, Cup Creek developer and the Lakeview Edition developer. Cup Creek was mainly to do with seventy-sixth Avenue, seventy-sixth Avenue is gonna be a further assessment, which is not, this county's gonna pay the common light bit. That one all went all the way through to, all the way through to Friday morning as well. And it ultimately boiled down to a one assessment for the residential of Cup Creek and Lakeview equal, regardless of lot size. Commercial from seventy-sixth down to Rudes Edition, across seventy-sixth Avenue was treated as a two to one. So for, if the residential was five hundred dollars, the commercial was a thousand. And the large lots were based, broke down based on one to one ratio, one parcel per one acre, similar to the way Rudes was. Rudes is the Dead Sea of Rudes, so that went through that one. The church ultimately is about twenty-five thousand and change, so they got reduced to just regional assessments. Same with some stuff that uh, um, BR Development had.
How does that compare to what they were originally thinking?
Uh, originally it was a hundred forty-one thousand.
Big difference.
Wow.
So, um, the special assessment commission decided that everyone in the district received a benefit. That's where every parcel got it, except for anything east of Drayton Seven, and.